You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the December 14, 2023 meeting of the Michigan City Commission for Women. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot accesslaporte county dot org.
Go ahead.
Hi, how are you?
I make the motion to accept the treasurer's report since there was no discussions and they went on. And it was the same as November.
I second that.
All in favor?
Who seconded?
I didn't.
Excellent, you read out what we need people to.
Don't need your board come up. Most, because I haven't been reading in my minutes.
Oh, okay.
And you moved.
And everybody gets to comment.
You moved three minutes.
I made a motion and I seconded to accept the money.
Okay, all in favor of the treasurer's report?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fantastic. Okay, before we go on to the next agenda, I forgot to do a very important thing, and that is, we need to add, after we talk about the August Women's Equality Day event, if we can talk about officers and the new commissioners for January. So just adding that to your agenda before the liaison comments. Okay? Great. And then I'm just, I'm very excited, we have a guest coming in today, Beverly, who just learned about, we have a learns commission here in Michigan City, so this is great timing. Beverly, what's your name?
Beverly. My name is Beverly McMartin.
McMartin?
No, no, Mac, M-A-C-K. I-C-K. Hyphen. Hyphen. Martin.
Okay.
And I didn't, I wasn't aware that there was a Michigan City Women's Commission. And so I was, I'm on the Sustainability Commission.
Great.
And as Faye Moore was leaving, I heard her say something about a Women's Commission. I was like, Michigan City's got a Women's Commission?
We're the best kept secret.
And we are, and the most active in the community. Very good work for our community. So the women's commission has been in existence now for 11 years, this will be the 12th year, and we just celebrated that 10 years of honoring all the women on the commission. And yeah, you'll hear about some of the events that we're going to be producing.
So I've been out of town for eight years, and so I'm just coming back, so.
Fantastic.
Welcome to the meeting.
Okay. So next is our March 8 International Women's Day event, Inspire Inclusion, and the subcommittee did meet. You guys want to go ahead and share what your thoughts are?
Yeah, I took the note. Yeah, Faye and Linda and I met and kind of laid the groundwork for the event, which will be March 8, Friday, March 8. And I think Christina secured the Krueger Memorial Park, so same as last year. And we know that Nikia is doing the food again. The national theme is Inspire Inclusion. And so we wanted to propose a panel discussion with three main speakers, a moderator, and then time for Q and A. So we discussed a number of possibilities, but I think Christina weighed in too, and we kind of thought three panelists. I think the consensus was last year, it was a little long, because speakers were going on, and maybe that was just my feeling, but I think other people did too. So I think if we have, so we, and Christina touched base with these, maybe you should talk about that.
Okay. I did, I did reach out to them, only because I had to reach out to Denise to talk about joining the commission. So then I just was like, oh, I better find out, and since we're going to be talking about their names at this meeting, that maybe I should get a tentative response from people.
Denise Ship Glenn.
Denise Ship Glenn, from the Michigan City Black Business Association. She's very excited to be a speaker, and she's just really got some really great ideas and programs that she's trying to develop right now, so I'm very excited about that, that she is a go. The other person that is a go is Liliana Franco from the, she just became.
Could you spell that?
Liliana.
L-I-A.
That's right here. Okay. She just became the operations director at the Economic Development Corp for Michigan City. And so I think it's a great time to kind of hear from the Economic Development Corporation about what's going on in our city, and what the opportunities are, to really share what they're working towards, and how we locally can get involved and invested.
Well, I think specifically, though, on the topic of women's entrepreneurship, women in business.
Yes, yes.
Not just the general vision.
Yes, because as we all decided that our theme for the year is women's empowerment, I mean, women's entrepreneurship, entrepreneurship for all people, but entrepreneurship and empowerment are our themes this year. So this kind of program for the International Women's Day is about inspiring inclusion will just really kind of put us in a good place to keep awareness about what we will be focusing on for the year, and other things. So the, we had also, for the subcommittee, had, came with Katie Eaton from the Michigan City Chamber of Commerce, but she is not available. She did recommend.
She's not at all available?
She's not, cannot commit at this time.
Oh, okay.
So she recommended Lori Felton from the Northwest Indiana Small Business.
Yeah, I think we should think about that.
Totally. There's no.
I mean, I know Lori, but I thought we would keep it more localized, Michigan City.
Yes.
And she's, you know, not specifically plugged into Michigan City.
Yeah.
I think our idea was to.
Was trying to keep it local, trying to get more exposure for women that are in business. And ladies sitting over there is Beverly.
Are you one of those?
Is one of those women.
Told that I am the only black female general contractor in La Porte County.
Wow. Well, I think at one point, we talked about maybe inviting women entrepreneurs to have their business cards or business promotional stuff there.
For Shingra, I'd like to see more women coming into the construction trades.
Yeah, and I'm sure there are opportunities too.
Yes, there are great opportunities, particularly right now.
Yes, and they were doing a lot of trainings, because one of the, Sarah Jones, who's on our commission, her daughter went through the training, has been like a foreman or something for some construction positions. So that's, yeah, so from here on, this is an open to who we want to be, either the third speaker, or do we want to do, you guys had also discussed a lot of local businesses, and yes, sharing their cards would be great.
Well, I thought too that.
I like the idea of more of an interaction, you know, more conversation and question and answer this year than we were able to make happen last year. I mean, we started a little late. Our timeframe last year was 12 to 2, and we did our setup.
We could go over the timeframe right now, if you want to. I mean, we.
We had outlined it as registration from 11 to 11:30.
Do people generally come in before 11?
No.
Okay, so half an hour should be enough for that. Then we're planning on having lunch at 11:30, then starting the program at noon, and then adjourning at 1, so that the program part wouldn't really be more than an hour. I, but you know, if there's a good Q and A, I don't want to, you know, limit that sort of opportunity, so. And I think we definitely was, were wanting to have a moderator. I don't know, we volunteered you Veronica, but I don't know if we feel comfortable with that. I'd be glad to do it if you don't want to. It's up to you, think about it.
Think about it.
Think about it. But I think, you know, the three people you mentioned, I'm not sure about Lori, maybe Lori Felton, maybe we could identify somebody else, but those, they have the big picture. And then I think once we start zeroing in on individual business owners, we run a risk of, you know, why didn't they ask me to be on the panel?
Yeah.
You know, I've been in business a long time, you know, so.
I've been in business longer than her.
Yeah, yeah, yes, I mean, the big overarching thing can set the tone, and then hopefully, maybe we, as commissioners, can plant a few questions too, to kind of prime the pump.
Well, this just popped into my brain, as you know, that maybe there are the two key speakers, right, and then there is a panel of small business owners. I mean, but again, that would make it longer.
Well, that's a risk going into, yeah.
Yes. I think, I think that last year, that, things that happened last year was, well, one, we got a late start, because Nikia, the food setup, so everything was like pushed back.
Right, but she knows, she knows the locations.
Yeah, she knows what to expect, yeah, what to expect.
So we were kind of pushed back 40 minutes, right?
Oh.
And then we had, we had too many speakers, we had five or six speakers.
And they really did have a time limit, there was like, no, okay.
Yes.
One minute.
Yeah, so I think if we just kind of tighten it a little bit, it'll be okay. I don't think a 12 to 2 timeframe is that bad of a timeframe. But then having this, but you're right, that needing a sign in time is important, because that's what we didn't have.
Needing what time?
The sign in time, that registration time, it does seem important that it is earlier. So it's either 11 to 1, or 11:30 to, you know, 1:30 to.
Well, you don't think we can do it, get it all done from 11 to 1? Is that too short of a timeframe? That's too short.
Because people showed up, I mean, the arrival time of everyone, again, that took like 40 minutes for everyone to sign in.
Okay, that's.
Didn't we do some, I thought we did pre-registration, where we knew that we had X number.
That's right.
And then we just, but.
But maybe, oh, so then it was just the food that was taking us? Okay, okay, that's where we were.
Well, is that.
We had a lot of people that were not registered too.
Right, right.
Probably not too many.
Registered, but we did do a pre-registration.
They signed in at the.
Come up with a cutoff for Nikia. And then what happened was, we didn't have enough people to pay Nikia. I mean, we had enough people to pay her, but we were planning on, what, 100? And we only had like 50 people had actually signed up, and then we kind of opened it up, and then we didn't have those people.
And we had 70.
We did get them.
70.
80 people. We did get at least 80, because I made the announcement at City Council meeting that Tuesday.
Yeah.
And so we had five council people showed up and some others.
Yeah, yeah, which is great. I think it would be great to get the council people here again.
See, this is a tentative timeframe, but you know, maybe till 1:30 makes sense too.
It depends on if you're having a panel discussion, because that would, I think that would include more Q and A.
Yeah.
I mean, more time.
That was the idea, right.
Because those would be people that people would question maybe more than Denise and Aleah. So, but it, so it depends on who you choose for, who you end up with, you know, for your speakers, and then kind of figure out the time from that, maybe.
Well, we were talking about, you know, 10-minute introduction.
Well, we can cut off, because our committee will meet again.
There you go, we'll regroup.
We'll regroup and do some more discussion on that, and do some more calling, or whatever. But that was the results of our.
But I should go through the rest of it, right? Yeah, we said invitations, however you did that last year, would be sent out January 15, Michael through King Day, actually, and RSVP by February 15. And then we wanted to make sure Angie and the city council were invited. And we talked about advertising, the Herald Dispatch, maybe the Beecher, and then some goodie bags. And that's, that would be good to have, you know, business cards, people could put those in there too. In fact, we did have, I did have that on there, Ask Palace for Business Cards Gaveaways with other. Okay, that was basically the outline, so.
Cool, I think this is great, yeah, getting the save the date out by January 15 seems like good. I will say that February 15 to March 8 is a really long time. People won't, it's best to get the end RSVP time closer to that date than February 15.
So.
I mean, because no one really applied, no one really signed up until the end, right?
Yeah. So what was the save the date thing that you had last year? Was it a email blast, or?
So basically, all we did was email last year.
And you had a whole list?
Yeah, we have, we have the email list, I have all of the names that came last year, have been added to that email.
Okay, cool.
List, next, on January, even prior to that, I can give the signing code and all of that information, it's a MailChimp.
So is January 15 too early to send out the?
Well, I noticed that the Indiana State Commission is already sending out their save the date for March 8.
Oh.
So I think there's, you know, in January, save the date, March 8, you know, with the International Women's Day, then another email blast, maybe on that February 15, saying RSVP by.
By what date, though?
Let's see. Because we know that we have a max limit of 100.
Because March 8, March 8 is the first week in March.
Yeah.
February is the shortest month.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So we was given two weeks.
Yeah, when does Nikia really want to know the numbers?
It doesn't matter. We will have 100 meals.
Oh, okay.
100 people can attend.
So we don't really have to.
We just have to try to get 100 people there, so that we don't waste food.
There you go.
And, no, there was no food left.
Yes.
There was no food left.
There was no food left, because people took, actually.
And we, you know, fed, yeah, the film crew and things like that. Yeah, like the 23rd, that's like two weeks, right?
Yeah, February 23 would be exactly two weeks, Friday, February 22.
So respond by.
RSVP by February 23.
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be good.
Just because people don't plan early anymore. And if you don't get those reminder emails, like closer to that date, I mean.
So we do want to get the save the date out January 15 or later.
And do we include some of the program details, or just?
A little bit.
Here's the theme. So somebody's going to craft that statement?
Yeah. Because we have to confirm our speakers and panelists and whatnot before we can actually craft.
Yeah.
So I selected you three main speakers, and I like the idea that we're having Denise and Liliana, so maybe we can take suggestions from you all, send them to us about who would be a good third speaker, right? Either Faye or me, or, yeah.
And then I think that the, the one thing that I wish would have happened was more exchange from the entire group together, versus just the table conversation, you know, to hear more, like, questions being asked, because there could be someone who is a business owner that could then stand up and say, well, I've been, you know, I've had a business on Franklin Street, or, you know, and kind of, yeah, I mean.
When the committee meet, you're more than welcome to come to the committee meeting.
What's that?
When the committee meet, we'll make sure that you get an invite to come to the, we don't want to try to do a committee meeting at our commission.
Good point, good point.
So we will definitely be looking forward to your ideas.
Great, great, okay.
That's, that's the report.
That we need to, there's nothing we need to do this time for that. Just note that January 15 would be prior to our meeting.
Oh, prior to our next meeting.
So we just have to make sure we have a meeting prior to January.
No problem. Yeah, we'll do it.
All right, and I think it's going to be really great. August, so now we're on the next agenda topic, which is the August Women's Equality Day collaboration with the League of Women Voters, and one of you can share.
Well, I've been in contact with Caitlin Teague, who is the Reproductive Rights Advocacy Chair for the American Civil Liberties Union in Indiana. And she said that she, I had asked if when she'd be available, and she, to come up here and speak, and she said she can't come up here during the session while the legislatures are in session, and so that takes us up to the end of March. And so then at the last meeting, we had talked about asking her to speak at the Women's Equality Day luncheon, and that you're planning to resume that then this coming August. We had done that for many years, and we always had a guest speaker quite often from Indianapolis, I don't know why, but anyway, so Caitlin even fits that. So I wrote back to her then, after our meeting last month, and told her we're looking at, on or around August 26, and I have not heard back from her yet, but I did. But also, the League of Women Voters discussed it, and the board discussed it, and then voted to, you know, that we would definitely like to co-sponsor this with the commission, and the league can do a lot of promotion, and we have an email list of about 300 people on the email list that we can invite, and Lori is the league's representative on the commission, and I'll be gone after this meeting, but she'll be, she'll be on this, and, you know, she designed the flyer that we have, for the brochure that we have for the Women's Commission, she's very good at things like that.
Well, I do the, she has the graphics, I just did the.
Well, I think that's a strength of yours, a skill of yours, and so we're sort of offering that as part of the, the contributions. What the league can't do is, we can't really afford to pay for the food, probably, but anyway, but, so we want to go forward, as long as you understand that, we want to do that, and Lori will probably take over, well, I'm the president of the league, so I can be in contact with Caitlin too, and Lori and I together. She is the commission, me is the league, will be in contact with her to get it scheduled. And if you want to set a date, though, and figure out where and when you would want to have it, you know, or a couple dates even that week, or around that, we had had it at the Bestnik Center for the Arts for the last few years, we had, after like, I don't know, eight years maybe we had it there, and they were never able to host us until September, so it was always, you know, like a week late, but, you know, if you think that you would want to try for Krueger Memorial Hall, that might be available on the 26th, and that's actually Women's Equality Day.
It's a Monday, oh, mightn't that be the best?
That's not a good day, Monday isn't a good day for you.
But I don't know, it's Labor Day, it's going to be.
Labor Day is always the first Monday in September, right?
Yeah, Labor Day is the second, yeah.
So we might want to, I don't know, what day is best, or, do we have a certain amount budgeted for food if we're going to pick up this afternoon?
No, you don't have that, but that's.
That's something we can do when we do officers and.
Part of it, the commission.
And get after committee for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so in January, you might want to pick that, or just February, whatever, pick something in to get that.
Put on the agenda.
Yeah, but if you come up with dates, especially if there would be a couple of dates that we could send to Caitlin and see if she would be available one of those dates even, or only one date even.
Do it around her schedule.
Yeah, see, I kind of asked her for that, would there be any time that last week, or, and she didn't get back yet to me, so I thought, well, maybe if we give her a specific date, or maybe she'll be.
What day of the week do you think is best then, for that?
I'd say a Wednesday or Thursday, what day are you doing the, oh, March 8 is a Friday, right?
Which is necessarily a great day, but we usually do Thursdays.
Thursdays, well, what about Thursday, the 29th, then? You want to shoot for that, if you want to be consistent with Thursdays, but that's up to you.
Yeah, yeah.
So are you saying we should move the March 8 thing?
No, 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 no.
This is, I know, but you said we usually do Thursdays.
They have always been on Thursdays for some reason, but March 8 is Friday, and that is available right now at Krueger and Tornapias Schedule.
All right.
So when we get a date, anyway, you and I will be corresponding with Caitlin and.
Sounds like a great program.
Caitlin, yeah, I think it would be. She knows about laws across the entire country, she knows what's going on in this state really well, and, you know, just to know what our threats are, and.
Yeah.
Where they're headed would be good.
Awesome, good. Any other comments on that this time? All right, so our next agenda item is our transition in January with new commissioners There's normally like a slate that happens for officer positions.
Yeah, I think that's in the bylaws.
Yes.
In the bylaws, the ordinance.
Yes. As of right now, the commissioners continuing on is Faye, Lori, Veronica, and Sarah. Meaning there will be five new commissioners.
Okay, so even though your term is up, that doesn't mean that you have to leave, it just means that you can re-up again.
Thank you.
And same thing with Bonnie. Well, now, what is your, who's the two in?
The mayors of the mayor.
So you're a mayor appointment?
Yes.
Okay, so you're as Christine.
Bonnie and I are both mayor.
You're both mayor appointments, okay.
And we have one city council appointee that needs to be, that has needed to be positioned, and minority health, but Keisha will be coming in. Does she know she needs to come next month?
Oh, I didn't, I just, I didn't know that, could we, are we going to put that in the minutes, because I had no idea.
What did you say?
Well, Albertine's going off, and you've got a replacement.
Yes.
She has a replacement, right?
I'm, the mayor appointed me.
Oh, you're a mayor.
No, you're, well, you're minority health, which is a.
Somebody from the.
There's always needs to be someone.
Yeah, I thought somebody named Keisha was.
Yes, that's who she's talking about, that's what I said, Keisha Ward.
Keisha Ward?
Yeah.
K-I-S-H-E-A.
K-I-E-S-H-E-A.
And it's, what was her last name?
Ward, W-A-R-D.
And it says the one member shall be appointed by the La Porte County Minority Health Coalition for a term of four years. for a term of four years. And the mayor appointments are for a fixed term of four years. And I've been on for eight years, so I am going on.
I got you, got you.
Yes.
I understand. And Christine, you've been on how many years?
Six.
You've been on six? Really? Wow, that was a fast six years.
For you, maybe.
So just for my own.
And eight years.
Just to be clear, so we have, the council has an appointment for a member in addition to the liaison? Or no?
Yes.
And they have, they're on appointment and then a liaison?
Yes.
The liaison is not a voting member though. I think the liaison is, you know, representing. They get, they, this is, this is what it is. Two, three members are appointed by the mayor.
Oh, three, so it sounds like you need one more.
Who's the other one?
Two are appointed by the council for four years each. One from NAACP, one from Minority Health Coalition, one from the League of Women Voters, and one is appointed by the other eight members.
What?
By the rest of us.
Linda, we, we elected Linda in, the commissioners.
Linda Conley.
Linda Conley.
They had, they're all mixed up in the clerk's office.
Yes, and we've had to fix that. I hope they fixed it. We tried.
They didn't fix it. I went today, but I wanted leaving at home.
Okay. So there should. Cause I already talked to them about that. Okay.
Eight.
So there should be nine total.
Well, I got one, how did I get that?
We have.
And of the three from the mayor's office, one of them has to represent a nonprofit.
Who is that other person besides you and Christina?
It might be Sarah Veronica, or it may, it's not Veronica.
And one of them has to represent education, so that must be Sarah.
Sarah's education.
Yes, so she must be a mayor appointment in education.
Yes.
And then Christina, you were the mayor's appointment in nonprofit. Okay, and I'm the one that's just a mayor's appointment, period.
And then Linda, who was, who does Linda represent?
She was elected by all of us.
She represented us, the Women's Commission. We voted, Linda Conley made a mistake of coming to a meeting with me. And.
What gap, Beverly?
Someone was leaving, I forgot who was leaving at that time. I think it was Shar.
Yeah, Shar.
Was leaving at that time and she.
She resigned early, so.
And she graciously accepted.
Art twisting.
Right? She graciously accepted the position.
Yeah, but what this does mean is you're president, vice president, and treasurer. Or you're gonna have to buy three positions. There are two. And so we do, do you need to nominate? Is that a thing that happens next month or do we nominate?
Yeah, we usually get arranged, we get it decided this month, but then the, or it says that you have to do the election in January. I do wanna say this about the treasurer though. Treasurer's position is, is very easy. It, I bet I didn't spend more than like maybe eight hours total in the past year on this. And everything that you do when you sent, when you submit an invoice to the controller's office, everything is done by email. I never had to go, I almost never had to go in there. I think I went in once, maybe in January to say hi, but that was about it. And so really treasurer is very easy. And as you see by our report this month, this is the same report for three months because we had no activity at all. So don't be afraid of treasurer, of being treasurer because it's, it's being an officer, but it's a very.
It's also easy because Kathy Dennis set up that book, there's a book that goes through the next treasurer. And it has a form for you to fill out, a request.
Yeah.
And, you know, our application is online. Of course, if someone wants money, requests money from us. And, and then, so the treasurer, Kathy Dennis was the one that set up that.
It should probably be somebody that's already on the commission.
Yes.
Simply because, and of course, it only leads.
Personnel will know your name.
Veronica. And all the speed is directed at you. I should just send you an email.
You're gonna send her an email?
No, I should have. But it, well, I'm very proud. But if Sarah was here or.
I'm nominating.
Linda was here, you know, any of the three of you.
Right.
Unless you end up one of the other officers, so.
All right, so are we open to nominations for officers?
Nominations tonight, it's just, yeah, the nominations and the election, the vote is next month. But you really need to get it, you know, established now.
Well, that's what I meant is nomination, not the right word, it's.
Yeah, the slate word.
The slate.
But it's just that.
Well, we're gonna slate.
We usually get a slate together by making phone calls and sending emails back and forth between now and next month.
Oh, we can't do that right now then, okay?
We can, but it puts Veronica.
The election next month.
And myself at a.
Ordinance. Yeah.
A hot spot.
No, but I mean, if we ask, you can have time to think about it. You don't have to say yes right now. Right? I don't know, I'm gonna keep quiet. I'm just adding your rights right in here.
At the first meeting of January, the members shall elect, you know, a member to be the chairperson, the vice chairperson, and one to be the recording secretary. And treasurer is not in here, but we added that after.
We received, we received money.
Added, amended the ordinance to, to allow for us to accept donations and to raise money. Several years ago, they did that and then added a treasurer, so.
But it's weird that we're gonna go into a January meeting with nobody to create an agenda, nobody's sending out the meeting notices. We don't, you know.
I could do that for January and I will also do the, save the date for the event. I will prep all that.
Cause technically you and Bonnie won't even be there, huh?
I think I'm supposed to be there. I am supposed to be at that meeting.
In the January meeting.
In the January meeting to then pass it on.
But this could be Albertine's and Bonnie's last meeting then?
I could come, I'm probably.
Albertine's, yeah.
I might run out before it starts, but I'll hand it over to whoever is.
Right, right.
The person. I see your eyes, I'll be looking at you all the time.
I also think that the.
If Sarah and Linda were here, I'd be looking.
You'd be looking at them.
Yes.
Just because they're not here.
Well, I, I think the really great thing though about our setup already is that we know what the two events are.
Right.
I mean, and there's a lot of clarity so that this year what should go smoothly.
Very smooth, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there might be some consideration of funding if we, or that this year's not a funding year. You know, it just depends, those are things that can be worked out. Like in August, if we do the 100 people with Nikia, again, that was $1,000. I don't remember what the budget was when we used to use Scartosey. Does anyone remember that?
Oh, I think it was the same.
It was about the same. Okay, so, so we know that, that's rough amount. And if those are the two events that are happening, then you're still at 14, you know what I'm saying? So although there's gonna be some printing costs for, you know, all the events.
And a lot of the printing can also be done at the city because we are a city commission. We just a lot of times chose to get it done faster and professional by going outside, by going outside of city. But we also have to look at, our new mayor was our liaison.
Yeah, yeah.
So she knows what our commission has been doing and she knows that we have been active and that we have been involved. And she, you know, was a good liaison and.
Can we invite her to our first meeting in January to be maybe on the agenda just to welcome, you know, just to kind of save your words?
You know, I think what we, issue, maybe not on her first month on the job, but I mean, I think having Angie come in to talk about what, what issues that they'd like to focus on for equality in our area, what is, what are some of the focuses? And that, then that might stem the Women's Commission to make different choices of, okay, well, we want to focus, we wanna help support this project that City Councilor, Angie's working on.
Well, according to the newspaper article, she does intend to do that. She tends, she intends to be more involved with our commissioners than the previous mayors have been. And she also not just.
On the job, actually.
Not just that, but also with the, doing the training, cause she's the only city council person that did actually boy training, commissioner training while, you know, during COVID for us. Not just our commission, but for all the commissions. It's just that only a few of the commissions even took advantage of it.
Yeah, I would, I went to their meetings, it was like for like three months of meetings, talking about how to run a meeting.
How to run a meeting, how to commission some.
Yeah, it was very helpful, for sure. Yeah.
I just wanna say this about my replacement. It's extremely likely that my replacement will be younger than me, but they should be much younger than me, I think, personally. So that's all I'm gonna say. It's very likely I'll be younger than me.
Yeah, but Bonnie, you also helped with the legislation part. You know, you brought us all the information on the legislature and stuff. So if we get too young, they're not gonna be interested in little state ideas, whatever.
Yeah.
So we, we actually, you know, but I, I agree with you. And actually, I looked at, my term is actually up in May.
That's weird.
It's not weird.
I thought they'd all be calendar years for six years.
No, no, they're not.
Yeah, okay.
So anyway, so we've, but that's, that's the thing that is good about the commissions and boards is that they kind of have, like our commission has it pretty much laid out, what area do people should be coming from. So we just need to assist the mayor and the city council in finding those people in those areas and have them submit their paperwork. That's kind of what we've done in the past, yeah.
Fay, should they, that be done before our January meeting? So that they're there? The new people are there for the meeting?
Well, they might not be there because the process in the past has taken so long.
Oh, yeah, over holidays.
Yeah, they do three votes or something during the city council meetings and the council only meets twice a month. So sometimes they don't actually get in in January, they get in in February and March. And I think that's how I got in in May.
Right.
But, but yeah, so. But that's what we've done in the past as a Women's Commission is try to find people in those areas that the people are leaving and got the, had them come to City Hall and get that paper to fill out, the fee on the board and the commission.
Yeah.
And then submit it to, to the clerk's office.
Yeah.
And then.
Takes a while.
Then they go through the process of being interviewed or whatever.
Scoring.
Scoring in.
Yes, and the person that I've asked is, is still considering. So I'm trying, been working hard, hopefully. Hopefully I'll get a yes in the next week or so.
And you're recommending that person to Angie then?
Mm-hmm, yeah. So basically, anyone who's interested would just fill out this form that have.
The boards and commission.
Boards and commission form.
And let whoever did, you know.
And if you are, we need someone for a mayor appointee.
So we can follow up. Sometimes they get lost in the show.
Yeah.
And sometimes other people have put in for the, for the different boards and commissions that we don't even know about.
Oh.
But so far, we've always gotten the ones that we have recommended.
Yes.
For our boys and commission.
Yeah. I think, you know, this commission, Women's Commission is important, right? You know, there's so many issues going on in the world. I do think, I do hope that we'll keep the legislative updates. And I mean, have, you know, now that we have that connection, I think just sharing with whoever wants to take that on of just, you know, announcing it every month is really important. I think it was really great. I think our guest speakers are always great. Just to keep us informed, but also to let them have the opportunity for the potential to share their presentation with the ALCO, so. Okay. I've been doing so much. Okay, good. City council liaison is not here, so we have no comments. Commissioners' comments?
Well, I would like to say, since this is my last meeting, that I will show up next month and hand the treasurer's file over to somebody and, or to Christina before that. But it has been a pleasure and a joy and an honor to be on this commission. I'm very proud of everything we've done. We've done so much. We've had so many, we've offered the communities so many educational opportunities and so many opportunities to see how much a few, you know, a handful of women can, what we can do. And we've raised a lot of money through the years. We've done it through just a lot of work. And we've, I think, were respected in the, in the community and by our mayor and city council, and that counts for a lot. And I'm just very proud to, and I'm very, very happy to have gotten to know and work with, with so many of you. I didn't know, I did, you're the only one I knew before this. And Beverly, I've known for many years, so. But, yeah, but it's been a pleasure to be involved in this and I'm very proud. It's something I'm very proud of.
Oh, we should acknowledge all the work that you and Fay did for the Naomi Anderson, not just the sculpture, but for the creating, the library. And that's just really an amazing amount of work. And the stuff we've been, all the programming that you had laid out was just, you know, really, really great. And that's why I stayed on, to support you in that.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're gonna, you're gonna keep on giving you now.
Great, and then one thing we should talk about is, yes, Qantas coming up. And they've got some great programs starting on, we forgot one. Uh, no, you brought, you got one, okay. On, starting on Tuesday, the 26th and running through January 1st. So we really hope that.
I'll credit that.
And this is at the Hope Community Center. And they really do have some fantastic programming, so. And it looks like they added me to Tuesday, so hopefully you'll see me there on Tuesday.
Ms. Allen, you're not gonna say anything? I would like to say on behalf of Ms. Allen, or you're gonna say, you could go right again. I love you being here, I appreciate you, you've done an awesome job. And Ms. Allen has helped us with that booklet that the Women's Commission put out with this funny women and stuff. Oh my God, that was such an awesome project and we thank.
I enjoyed it.
Thank you for that and all your guidance and all your leadership, and Bonnie also. Thank you for all your guidance and leadership. She showed us what a president should be and do, she, she was awesome. But I thank you for, for all your encouragement for the Women's Commission and all that you've done with the Women's Commission. And Christina.
Eleven years, she's been on since the beginning.
Yes, yes, now.
Take this and leave. I have had a great time. I've enjoyed several presidents of this commission too, several treasures. And it's time for somebody younger and newer to step up to the plate. And I can just sit back and watch, but I have had a good time, very good time. I enjoyed the booklet. Someone has asked for the booklet for this coming February, so now I have to find it. Yeah, so I'll still be doing a lot of stuff, but I'll be basically doing it from home.
Okay, all right, good, good.
Well, we'll see you in March, Kathy, yeah.
I also like to say Christina, I thank you, I'm so glad I met you. I enjoyed the Trion Farms, the, the people walking out on the stilts and all of that good, good stuff that you brought to the community and the film, I can't remember the name of it now.
Yeah.
But the film that, that was shown about the water and everything, our environment.
Regeneration.
What was it called?
It was called Regeneration.
Yeah, that was awesome. Out at Triumph Farms. I really didn't know that place existed out there. Out there, so it brought a light on Triumph Farms and what it really represents, all the way the houses, a lot are green and have taken the environment and, and put the environment in, in place or whatever, how we want to say it. And your leadership has been great, too. You have a lot of great ideas about women and women's health and women's issues, and we really appreciate your time being on the board.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's been fun to see an artist as creative and as right brained as you are.
Try to do this. Exactly.
You're wonderful at it, and you have such a big picture of everything. It's just that, I've been telling you that for years. You have to do this because you can see the big picture, and so many people don't see that, see the, I'm lost in details, but you're the big picture, and that's just.
Abstract, Bob.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the administration, isn't it? We knew all the brains. Almost, as well, to make this really work.
Well, yeah, that's what happened, yeah. But it's been so much fun to get to know you.
Thank you.
So much fun, and thank you for everything you've brought to this.
I think the only one I knew was Fay.
See her, I believe, in Spay.
She's the greatest.
Did you start in 11 years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pat Boye and myself, I was council, and we came up with the women's commission.
I mean, this, I mean, this commission has always had really powerful, strong women on it, which, you know, one of the reasons why I joined, and the reason why I think Michigan City is so amazing is that there are so many strong female leaders in this community. And just that opportunity to kind of, you know, share, teach people that this is here and that we can do more. And I think this is going to be a great year, great years with Angie, and the popularity is just, yeah, really open for Michigan City right now.
You know, there were so many positive role models that were never spoken about until we did that booklet.
That booklet, you know, it's great booklet.
I mean, that was some searching, even the history of Michigan City until 1958, can you imagine?
Right.
But we have written, not before this in history, but until the 50s.
Yeah.
It's like we never existed, so that, that brought a lot of stuff to the forefront. I found a lot of people and a lot of people here that do things that we didn't know anything of.
Right. Well, we're getting the Emmy Andersons, too.
We have engineers here, we have all kinds of people we've never talked about, and it's not talked about in schools.
Right, yeah.
Well, there's a project. Someone should do, you know, a Black History of Michigan City that is taught in schools or that we, you know, because it's about creating the pride in the community to make the changes that we need, right? And that would be really a fascinating, maybe that's a men's social status, create a little history booklet or something.
Well, even we, as the women's commission, can, since our name is already on it, we could probably make sure that we have a part in the Black History Month celebration by maybe producing some more. Producing the book and hand it out on Black History Month.
I still have all of that information.
Okay.
And we just never heard about it.
It's great, yeah. Cool. And where are we now? We're public comments, any other comments? Do you have any public?
Well, I've been joining, doing part of your meeting. I'm actually a public administrator with a specialty in economic development. And even though I do own this construction company now, but I will be back. I'm interested in what you're doing, because like I said, when I left Michigan City, I don't remember there being a women's commission. And since I've been back, I've been getting calls from younger women who have seen articles about what I'm doing in the newspaper, and they're saying, "Well, I see what you've done, and I never thought I could do that."
Yeah.
And I'm saying to them, "Well, yeah, you can, you know, you just need a mentor and some guidance." And so I'm pleased that I followed Fay here this evening, so that, you know, I could see that there is a women's commission now, and, and we've got all these younger women who need that guidance. And so I would, I would love to be involved more. I don't know how much more I can put on my plate right now, but I will be coming back, and especially since now I see that I know so many tiny.
Yeah.
Over there. People, Bonnie, we go way back, so, you know, it's interesting that you all are involved.
Well, I think it's great, you just have, you're joining, or potentially joining at the right time when that's our focus, is, you know, entrepreneurship and empowerment for our community.
Yeah, it's really important.
Yeah, yeah. That's awesome. I'm excited. Great, so the next meeting date is January 18th, and I imagine that will be back at the other location. The IBEW Central School.
Oh, okay.
Is your email on here? Finally, okay, great. Okay, great. So.
It's kind of interesting I happen to have you on.
I know, I was, I was like, this is awesome.
I happen to have it resonate with me, so.
It was on. On point. Always bring your residents, it's a good idea.
We just did that presentation, put us up saying.
Oh, okay, okay, so nice. Okay, great.
It's a one hour meeting, I think. I moved to adjourn.
That's the other thing, we do try to keep it at one hour.
All right, so we are. Most, approved, I don't know. Okay. In favor of, is your right, yeah? Tiring now? A meeting. Okay, good. Thank you, we are. Oh, duh. Words are not coming there.